Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Marson.
Sure, Ryan.
Eric.
Lexi.
Here.
Justin.
Eric.
John.
Eric.
Jeff.
I need a motion and I would like to do some changes to the agenda tonight. First, remove item E, which is the presentation by Stephanie Gruss from the health spa, and add meadowscaping public hearing, setting a public hearing for meadowscaping for the 23rd. We could add that to the agenda tonight.
Make the motion to approve the agenda with the requested changes.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries, so we have removed item E and added meadowscaping, meadowscaping public hearing. I would also ask to make an agenda change to move the audit presentation up to following the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to move the audit presentation after the consent agenda.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries and that is moved. Now I will need a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with all the changes.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. I will now open up for citizen comment about anything on the agenda for this evening. Marson, anybody?
Nope. I don't have anybody.
I'm gonna go ahead and pause citizen comment. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. If there are no questions, we're done.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. So at this time, we'll start with the audit presentation. If you're ready.
I'm ready. Thanks for having me. Thanks for having me here tonight, here to present the audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2025, and have a couple of components of, or a couple of different reports that you have here tonight, one being the city's financial statements and the other being our communications letter. First, I wanted to talk about the results of the audit and specifically the independent auditors' report included in the financial statements. That report talks about management's role related to the financial statements, as well as our role as your auditor, in that the financial statements are management's responsibility and it's our job as your auditor to come in and test, examine, look at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in your financial statements and ultimately give an opinion as to whether we believe those financial statements to be presented fairly in all material respects. The city does utilize a cash basis of accounting and on that basis of accounting, I'm happy to report that we're giving a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. We also have a report on government auditing standards, as well as a report on legal compliance with Iowa code. And on the internal control report or the government auditing standards report, it talks about how we consider internal control when performing and planning our audit and we are required to report any deficiencies in internal control that rise to either a significant or a material weakness level and we continue to have one finding to report related to a lack of segregation of accounting duties and that's a fairly common finding for a city of your size, meaning that there's not a, there's not enough individuals to appropriately segregate accounting duties into the four separate, initiating and authorizing, recording and processing that information, the custody of the related assets, as well as the reporting and reconciling of that information. All of those specific functions are difficult to achieve with a finance staff of your size, but it is important enough to continue to be aware of at the city council level. We also have, again, our report on Iowa code where we do have to note any non-compliance that's noted as part of our audit procedures and there are no compliance findings to report for this year. The last piece of our communication is our communications letter. This includes all required communication in accordance with audit standards, as well as some charts and graphs that highlight some trends and some further analysis. So we'll start by taking a look at general activity here over the last five years. As, as you can see here, we're at a high point here in 2025 related to receipts. Disbursements can vary from year to year depending on, you know, certain capital activity, but overall, if city services and staffing were to remain the same, we would still see, expect increases in both receipts and disbursements just with cost increases and inflation. The way that the city manages reserves is through a fund balance policy which calls for a minimum fund balance policy or fund balance of 25% of annual budgeted revenue. When we take a look at that unassigned fund balance here for June 30th, 2025, it's at about $1.5 million, which is about 55% of receipts based on 2025 amounts. When we drill down on the detail of general fund receipts here over the last five years, did want to highlight some changes comparing 2024 to 2025. So again, overall, did see an increase in revenues totaling about $2.6 million for the year. The most significant variances occurred in taxes and charges for services. Taxes increased about $78,000 with an increase in levy and then the charges for services category increased about $64,000 with an increase in community center receipts. The next chart highlights the general fund disbursements here over the last five years. Here again, comparing 2024 to 2025, we had some variances in several different categories here. So general fund, or excuse me, general government disbursements decreased about $87,000 and that related to some employee turnover, as well as some changes in wage allocations. Public safety category decreased about $40,000 and that was due to the purchase of a police cruiser in the prior year. Culture and Recreation decreased about $135,000, again, related to some capital purchases back in 2024. And then lastly, Community and Economic Development disbursements increased about $71,000 related to some housing and lodging studies that were performed. The next charts, next couple of charts highlight the city's enterprise funds. These present a bit differently and a bit different terminology is that these activities really present kind of like a business in that we evaluate whether the operating receipts are sufficient to cover the operating disbursements that are required for operating these services. And here we can see for 2025 that all activities, water, sewer, solid waste, all provided a positive operating income for the year, which then are available for, you know, providing resources for any debt service requirements, as well as any capital project activity that might be required in these funds. The next chart highlights what the cash position is in each of these funds. Again, this lets you know what resources are available for, you know, any future capital needs. And as you can see, for the water fund, it was fairly flat, did decline a little bit compared to 2024 from $624,000 down to about $614,000. And as mentioned earlier in the previous slide, most of the operating receipts or the surplus for the year was applied towards debt service and capital-related activity. And as a result, it was fairly flat between the two years. And so again, after considering that non, those non-operating items, solid waste increased to about $63,000 and the sewer fund cash balance increased slightly there to about $894,000 at the end of the year. That's a high-level look at our audit procedures, as well as some of that financial analysis there in the communications letter. Appreciate working with the city and all the help throughout the audit process. And next, I'd just like to open it up for any questions.
The name of our presenter.
Andrew.
Andrew, councilperson Brian Schatz. Thanks for your presentation. On the general fund disbursements under the Culture and Recreation, you said in 2024, there was more expenditure on some projects and things. What were those? Was that our investment in Caliox and the trail? Is that why that number's lower? You've been so fast, I'm trying to read.
No, it would have been, you know, we purchased a lot of stuff in the rec center for like equipment, things of that became a fund, some of that. I think just some capital expenditures and some improvements that were made.
Okay. Andrew, is there anything you think that we can do differently or additionally related to the segregation of duties finding, or are we doing everything that you believe we can do?
Um, when it's at that material weakness level, I would say that there's always room for improvement in that area. I think, you know, trying to get that down to a significant deficiency level is kind of the sweet spot, I would say, for most local governments that are trying to, you know, seek improvements in that area. What that often, you know, entails is more involvement either from others within the finance team to, you know, review each other's work, but oftentimes it comes down to the access within the accounting system to perform multiple accounting functions, which then, you know, you know, gets into maybe more other documentation, other controls that you might be able to implement to kind of resolve, you know, some of the risks associated with that. So I would say there probably are, are some opportunities there and, and whether those are feasible, you know, cost-effective would probably require some further, further analysis.
I think one of the big things is like I have access to everything, but if Shawnee's gone or Kathy's gone, I need to be able to have access and vice versa with Kathy. You know, that's the, the tricky part. There have been times when they're both gone and it's just me here by myself and I have to be able to have access. So I think that's kind of the hard part when it comes to, you know, looking over deposits. One person is taking in the money, one person is reviewing that report and preparing the deposit and then a different person is taking it to the bank and then I'm reviewing the deposits. And that, whenever I'm posting things in the bank account, not only do I reconcile it every month, but she reviews a lot of those journal entries when I'm posting things, she's reviewing the bank reconciliation.
Sometimes count money.
Sometimes she has to count money into the deposit stuff. So it's more a matter of when we're all here all day, every day consistently, we probably could and just eliminate some access for some different people. But where that's a problem is when one person or two people are gone. And then, and there's really just three of us that, you know, and that can go to the bank and do certain things, but a lot of things that she doesn't, you know, the day-to-day stuff, she doesn't.
So it comes down to just the size of staff.
Yeah, the size of the city and just the ability to, but yeah, I mean, I'm trying all the time to be like, hey, make sure you have a sign off on that or have a second set of eyes do that and sign off on it whenever we can.
I think we're doing an excellent job, given the fact that we're, you know, for the most part, we're here every day, but there are some days when there's just two of us and in some cases there's one. So we do the best with what we have.
I think it's a common finding and it's one that we've had, have every year.
It's common, I would agree. I think the position that's at risk really in this is probably yours because of the, you know, ubiquitous access and those other kinds of things, just in terms of protecting. I don't know, maybe it's something we could discuss at some other point in a little like work group or something, just to, I'm just wondering if there's ways we can handle the in and out access on the accounting system. So when somebody is away, somebody else has access, when somebody's back, you know? It's, I don't know how onerous that is, but if people are gone for two weeks, we could probably situationally address system access for somebody else and then switch it back when they're back, those kinds of things. I'm more about protecting not just the city, but actually our employees that I think do an excellent job. And it's just, you know, the personal risk is a concern too.
Yeah, I could definitely reach out to Dustin a little bit more and, you know, other clerks and say, hey, how do you handle this or is this something you come up?
It's probably onerous, the backgrounds are probably onerous and then we decide not to, but this is the third year I've seen it and I, and we just keep saying, well, our staff is small and that might be the right answer, but we're getting, you know, we're growing. So, so we should address it somehow.
Any other questions for Andrew? Andrew, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
All righty.
Thank you.
Moving on. Parks and Recreation.
Do you guys have any questions? I have much more than we talked about at the work session.
How many kids did you end up with at the fun run?
It was probably around like 15, 16, it was nothing crazy. It was just a very, very bad time. Like I heard from a lot of kids that, or a lot of parents, I should say, that they would have came had we not hit school, open house, both in that one Piazza. So it was just bad.
Bad timing on.
Bad timing. We usually get complaints because we do it too late in the night because the kids have school. This is the first year where kids didn't have school, they didn't start until Monday and so they had open house instead, so. Just planning, but they loved it. I mean, the kids, we actually had different kids that have come for the scavenger hunt because we kind of teared them a little bit and everyone that was there had a ball. So they absolutely loved it, so it was cool.
Comments on the park when they were there?
Oh, I mean, I say, I mean, just gorgeous, didn't know this was here, a lot of that, like just, I mean, they think it's absolutely pretty, they're excited for, we had just little things for the same pavilions possibly coming. Just excitement, I think, overall. They loved the playground, that's literally, okay, it's like run, okay, now I'm going to playground. Like scavenger hunt, okay, perfect, now I'm going to playground, like it just.
There you go.
Kids everywhere on playground, so it was cool to see.
So we received this sign from IDM, how does it look?
They have not gotten it installed yet.
Right, but they, we have it somewhere and we're still not having it yet.
I thought I saw it by that.
They agreed, they agreed, so one day I went up there, they agreed that they were just gonna make the frame and install it, have it complete.
Well, that's nice.
So more than what, yeah.
Yeah, that's, we were trying to figure that out.
Do out there, right?
IDM pavilion. Aiming right, still open, yep. Great, we're excited to see that.
Are there any other questions for Stacy? All right, thank you, Stacy. Chief.
Yeah, you guys have my report, it hasn't changed since the work session, so kind of went over everything that's in that. The only thing I can add is we are getting new body cameras and the new squad cameras that we talked about that are budgeted for through Axon, that's coming in October. So I'll have a further development, but that's gonna be installed, I think, October 7th, 8th is when that's coming, but to be determined. Other than that.
Who's installing?
Axon.
Okay.
The company we bought it from. And they come right onsite, they come right to our police department, do it right in our garage, so we don't have to go anywhere, our vehicles will be. They'll do like one vehicle at a time or they're bringing a set of crew. Basically, they're gonna do two cars and then they're gonna do the other two. So I think it'll take all of a day and I think maybe a day and a half, just depends on how fast they can do it. But I think they'll get it done in a day.
Can I ask you one question on the, the stats?
Yeah.
I just thought, I found it kind of interesting that the general service call trend through the summer has been a slightly declining trend and I've always been under the impression that summer is.
Normally, that's correct. There's answers to that is people were off during the summer on, you know, just vacations and stuff. So when officers are off, the calls will go down.
Okay, so it was related to our staffing potentially?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Didn't know if you're seeing some other weird trend.
No, I think it's due to staffing, you know, like people are off on vacations or whatever they have going on yet that we generate the numbers, so.
Very good.
November will be that way because we have guys that like to hunt, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief. Dean.
Any questions on the report?
I know we've talked about the Beaver Dam situation before and I see you guys have cleared them again. Is there any further interaction with DNR, anybody about a different solution?
Yeah, I mean, talked to a different, couple of different people about trapping them. Their biggest concerns are with, you know, the pets, people walk down, they're walking in, you know, releasing the pets, you know, taking them off the leash or whatever their concerns are. The possibility of them getting caught and don't want the liability. So, yeah, other than that, I never really reached out to the DNR, but just some local trappers.
It's still pretty problematic.
It is very problematic yet.
Yeah.
How frequently do you have to do that?
Yeah.
I mean, quite honestly, in a time manner, I mean, we don't really focus on it on a regular standard basis, just because we've got other priorities. Yeah, I mean, if we get a spare, you know, a couple of hours here or there, we'll go in there and just try to clear them. If we see that it's really backing up toward the state highway, but otherwise it gets neglected. Yeah. And it's, it's gonna be terribly hard to manage with, with the food source that's there for them, the willows, so.
Tasty stuff. We can't trap, you can't trap them safely and relocate them versus trapping kill. I guess I don't know, I don't know, but.
It'd be a slow process.
Yeah.
I don't know how functional it'd be.
Yeah. No, we're gonna be in a perpetual loop on this thing because it's.
Yeah.
Not gonna change.
It's one to get rid of one and another one's right behind them, probably.
Or the way, I mean, they're very destructive, but like I say, with the food source that they have over there, it's.
How many willows are over there?
How many willows are over there?
Like big ones that.
I mean, it's not even necessarily just the big ones that create the problem. It's all the little ones that they net in and mesh together as well.
That's great. Young willows are tastier than old willows.
They're better.
Probably easier.
Yeah, I was curious on if we got rid of them and planted something different in there.
Yeah, I mean, I would be all about clearing that whole stream line out. You know, I think we could very well manage the beaver that probably leave at that matter on their own.
Would we contact to set something else like that?
As far as cleaning that up.
And then being able to make sure we put something in there.
Correct.
Yeah, to do it the right way, would that be just the DNR?
Probably contact watershed, I'd probably go with them first before I go to the DNR. Yeah, I mean, I don't even know if we'd have to necessarily contact anybody. I mean, we could probably get a contractor lined up just to clear them out of there.
Well, I'm just talking about make sure we do it right. I mean, if we're planting something, make sure we get something in there that's not gonna.
I thought back a year or so ago when we were looking at grant opportunities for trail and stuff, wasn't there some guidance from the, the DNR about they wanted the vegetation along the.
Conservation.
Stream edge and it's holding it. So Conservation Board wants it.
Yeah.
Neighbors don't want their dogs to get trapped. It floods and you guys spend a lot of time clearing stuff out, there.
I think it floods, doesn't it?
I wouldn't necessarily say that it floods, I mean, there comes a point in time where it backs it up, where it's a concern to the DOT. Because it backs the water up, the heights and all that.
But DOT needs to talk to the Conservation Board.
And the DNR.
And the DNR and have, have them all get it figured out and leave us out of it.
Well, I don't know, we can necessarily be left out. But, yeah, I mean, we're definitely, like I say, I don't see why there's a reason we can't get a contractor in there, if that's, if that's the steps we want to take and clean it up. The same side, the same way that the old deal does.
Just continually throwing money at it.
Yeah.
Maintain it.
But if we clean it up means we take everything out of there and we do or we don't replace it. I know the neighbors, at least to the north, have expressed interest in the, you know, the screening that it provides between them and the commercial district and so that's a sensitivity.
There's a lot, it's not just a one factor.
It's right. I mean, do we try to be proactive and go in there and plant some trees?
That's right.
You know, further to the north, the waiting streamlines. You know, then the concern is when we do go in there and clean it up, you know, that we plant them back far enough that we're not damaging when we are doing the cleanup, so.
Future Community Heart and Soul Project to clean that up and then re-beautify it.
I mean, by going in there planting trees would actually be making the account to try to.
Secure some, some buffer.
I think I like it, at least to get started.
Are there any tree opportunities, Brian?
Well, yeah, then.
Quite honestly, Stacy and I, when we met with Brian Preston with the Conservation Board, Conservation Board, Watershed, you know, there are definitely opportunities to purchase trees at a cheaper rate.
Trees Forever and then there's the Living Roadway Trust Fund that Iowa DOT uses. When there's watershed issues that are affecting the DOT, there's opportunities through that. So that was part of our research on potential applications if we were to do things close to the Highway 20, but this would pertain because it's affecting, affecting the roadway.
Is that something that your group could look at, working with us on? Okay.
That would be cool.
Okay.
You mean this new committee?
Yes, right there.
Yeah, we could help gather information.
Could help.
Could be the best for that aqua area, have it to where it's drawing the food source away from them, but then also have it where it mitigates that water and helps minimize the washing.
Guess the only downfall might be is if we put new girls in there, take away the existing, have to make sure the beaver leave before they, before we remove the new girls.
Yep, yeah.
Would be a concern.
Plant a temporary buffer on the south side, buffet on the south side of the buffet.
Not that he's giving it any, but it's, he's got a, he's got a plan.
Anything else for Dean? Thanks, Dean.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Anything?
No report.
Okay. Mayor's report, I don't have anything. They do have the chamber breakfast in December, first weekend, Friday. I will be out of town, so I would entertain anyone on the council who might be interested in presenting on our behalf.
What's the date?
December 5th. Pre-admission to the breakfast with the.
Yes, three breakfasts and a primo seat.
Something we can't, I don't know.
You gonna be there?
Be there, Susan.
One light here.
Oh, you're gonna be there already?
Probably.
Oh, yeah. How would you like to not sit with your coworkers?
Yeah, we'll talk.
Okay. Jeff's gonna do it, I got it written down.
Yeah.
And it's recorded.
Oh, Friday.
Uh, next up, we have a proclamation sent to us by Railroades, we need it this time. Proclamation National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Whereas Sea Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the US from September 5th through the 21st, 2025. Whereas 2,252 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 749 personal injuries responsible for 248 fatalities in the United States during 2023. And whereas 1,465 pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States resulting in 821 pedestrians being killed and another 644 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way during 2024. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right-of-way is our private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, Inc., United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, railroad, law enforcement officers, first responders and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Therefore, I, Russell Fatt, Mayor of Piazza, do hereby attest my full support proclaiming September 15th to the 21st of 2025, National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. And I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education.
We'll have that printed out in red feet aside.
Great. Next up, we have. Next up, we have, uh, resolution approving commercial company. Twenty five, twenty five, to remove it, to remove existing VCT and base, prep and seal for furnish and install LVT vinyl base and transitions, paint logos per renderings in the amount of ninety-eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Guys have any questions on this?
You might have mentioned this in the work session. Is this, I mean, this is a great quote compared to our budgeted estimate. Did we get multiple quotes?
Did. I said that I did it. Um, this was the, I've tried company after company after company to do the floor and no one wanted to, to touch it. So this is, yeah, this is one that was willing to do the test spot to be willing to install the floor, um, with it. So I know technically it's three bits. I just, I think.
No, I remember that discussion when we were doing the patch and stuff too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a process.
It has been a long process.
No timing has been worked out yet on this.
No, I, I, so I talked to him last time. I told him that logistics were gonna be the biggest thing that obviously he knows all things PCC. That that's going to be the biggest, whatever, that it could potentially be the same as the track that we wait, whatever. So no, as he said, once it's approved, we'll talk and we'll, we'll hammer that out. So I don't have a, um, I mean, our first crime tournaments, October fifth, something, and then we start tournaments out of October. So there's not gonna be.
Another big window.
No, at all, to be able to.
It's like the time it'll take to.
So, so then, I mean, so the track took over a week and a half. Out of adventure, it'd be comfortable. Yeah. I mean, the hope, the hope is that, you know, can we piece it out? Can we, you know, do one side, keep the other side open? Is there a way to keep the gym open? I, those, yeah, I need to have those conversations. Obviously we want to do it in a safe manner. And also efficient for them. So I'm not sure what it's gonna look like, but when I do, I'll let you know.
Was he gonna store the material?
If we decide to do it afterwards, he'll store the material there at his place.
We'll have a purchase.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Much exactly like he did for, for the, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution approving commercial company proposal date August fifth, twenty twenty five to remove the VCT and base flooring.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
Johnny.
Jeff, I.
Just wanna add one more thing. I know you already proved it, but what, just as a tidbit, uh, we are going with a thicker, um, thicker LBT for it so we can remove the transitions to the court. We've been having a lot of problems with black transitions from pickleball players, like, I don't know if they play back there or what, um, but that they're coming off a lot so that we chose to do the little thicker transitions to make it not have to worry about different pieces. So just.
Do you, do you recall what they're trying to projecting the life of the flooring to be?
I was gonna say, I, I asked that question. I don't, but I can find out the answer for you for sure. I know there's a warranty on the product as well, um, but I'll get you, I'll get you that. So over ten. That I know.
It's good.
But I don't know.
Is this all getting funded out of the PCC kind of?
We're taking it, we're taking it out of reserves is how we.
Yeah, so PCC reserves, accumulated reserves. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, good.
Motion carries. We don't like it. Wasn't sure I'm gonna get that in there. I don't use the gap. Uh, next up, uh, resolution approving final report generated as a result of the obstacle setting meeting. These inclusive revisions that, uh, Councilman Schatz had recommended. And we now need to adopt by resolution.
Happy, happy to make the motion for twenty twenty-five fifty-one resolution approving final report generated as a result of our PASTA goal setting session that was held July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. I'll second. Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
Johnny.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next up, we have resolution scheduling public hearing amending ordinance fifty, uh, thirty, water rates fifty dot thirty-two rate of sewer rent for September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to set up public hearing for September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five for public hearing amending ordinance fifty thirty water rates and fifty thirty-two rates of sewer leak.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
Johnny. Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Uh, next item is schedule public. Yes, it is.
That's a good question. How close, how close to that hearing date do we think we'll be before we get a usable? Estimate.
Sure, that probably been made into gigantic. We have not set a date yet. He was on vacation last week, so um, his scheduling person knows and she has a copy of the spreadsheet.
Pretty simple tool.
Well, granted, I'm sure it is, but, um, yeah, I will follow up with them.
Obviously, the desire is to get a tool and available to the citizens before the hearing. So people can explore what it means and we can broadcast it a little bit more. So I know that we're not able to roll that timeline, but that would be ideal.
Yeah, I'll follow up with him and I'll, uh, let you know on my weekly summary. You bet.
Next up, uh, motion or, uh, resolution scheduling a public hearing for meadowscaping for, uh, nine twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to, through, or for a public hearing for September twenty-third for meadowscaping. I'll second. Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
Johnny.
Jeff, I.
Brian, I'm about to say the motion carry. And serious.
My fault, not yours.
Sir pitch and all.
Right. Uh, we did remove, uh, the, by definitely tonight, so we will move to citizen comment if anyone would like to approach. Anyone online like to process? All right, go ahead and close citizen comment and I need a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
Johnny.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.